Okay, um, welcome everybody to our return to play town hall for today, March 22nd. We're very excited to have Kerry McDonald here from volleyball Canada. He's going to give us lots of information on VC's COVID-19 and a little bit of policy and a little bit of update from there. On our call today, we have, like I mentioned, Kerry McDonald from volleyball Canada. We have Sue's Suzanne Wallace is our beach manager, Alicia Liddon's our program manager, and Joanne Lebichich, our executive director. So that's who we have here for you today. Other staff members, I believe Mark is here too, from our youth comp team. So I'm happy to have you here and without further ado, did we want to jump right in, Alicia? Yeah. Well, I'll jump right in and our first topic, oh, we'll go over the agenda. Okay, agenda, so Kerry McDonald will be talking about volleyball Canada and a COVID-19 update. We're going to go over some Ontario government framework, some changes that were just released, as well as compliance, how to make sure we are following that framework. Joanne's going to go over some ministry funding announcements. We'll have some questions and answers and then we'll go over the agenda or sorry, the schedule for town halls coming up. So lots of fun stuff tonight. If you have any questions, you can use them in, you can type them down in your chat, which is at the bottom, and we will bring them up as either answer them in the chat or bring them up to Kerry while he is presenting. And I'm going to ask that you guys, please make sure that you're muted. And try to use the chat if you need to talk or things like that. And yeah, so again, thanks to everybody for taking time out of your evening and I will hand it over to Kerry to get us going on our COVID-19 update of volleyball Canada.
Thanks Kerry for having me. Thanks to OBA for having me here today. So I'm going to give just a little bit of an update on what's going on right now with volleyball and and kind of more of a, some of it's a generic kind of COVID update to the current status of where things are at in Canada. So the first thing I'll jump into is just understanding that as we do return to sport, and I know it feels like we've been talking about returning to sport for a very long time. And in some situations, we really haven't got to do a whole lot of what would be a true return to sport. But we, we know that that is coming and thankfully with the rollout of the vaccines, there is definitely a light at the end of the tunnel. And just one thing I wanted to start off with is understanding that as we do get to return, just everything is risk and the assessment of risk is always on a sliding scale. And we're, it's going to be a long time before we can truly say that the risk of coronavirus is absolutely zero. So it's always going to be in some spectrum for the next foreseeable future. And I think just wanting to let everyone be aware that your own assessments and each individual gets to make their assessment of what risk is acceptable to them as an individual. We have to make those same decisions as an organization, as a program, and what we feel is acceptable. And that level is not going to be the same for everybody. So just quickly though, to go over, there's certain things about our sport that we know are going to either increase or decrease that risk. So, you know, we know that outdoor activity is going to be safer than indoor. We know that less participants is going to be safer than more participants. Shorter durations within confined spaces is going to be better the longer. Less common contact surfaces is going to be safer than more. Increased sanitization protocols is going to make things a little bit safer. Less frequent and shorter breaches of physical distancing with other individuals. And finally, the use of masks. So yeah, so as we go through this and as we're, if any of us are having to work on developing return to the sport plans, potentially within a framework that's allowed within your health region, we can look to these types of activities to either decrease or increase the risk of potential transmission within our environment. Let me go to the next slide. Okay, so I wanted to start off with just a conversation around mask use in sport. Because I know that this has been a, there's been a lot of communication and a lot of discussion on this. So just to start off with, there's overwhelming evidence that it is the inhalation of the coronavirus that represents the most common and the major transmission route for catching and having COVID-19. There's also an overwhelming amount of evidence to show that masks use is an effective form of reducing that transmission of COVID-19. And I've just listed a couple of references, some papers that kind of summarize this a little bit. We'll go to the next slide. Yeah, so now mask use in sport is being researched a lot right now. It has been, there's been quite a bit of research that's come out since last summer. At volleyball Canada, we're just continually to try and trying to track all the research in the space. And we'll put it together into kind of a tracking document, a lit search. So we've been looking at this for quite a while. So research suggests that face mask use while exercising may increase what's called dipsnea. And this is a perception of shortness of breath. It is very much a perception because what we do find is that there's small and often even difficult to detect effect on physiological measures of breathing. So this can be things like work of breath, blood gases, or other physiological parameters. And this is actually true during both moderate as well as heavy and maximal exercise. So yeah, so just to, what we know from the literature is that there's likely a very low to even measurable amount of physiological changes. Now that is in healthy individuals. There's always going to be individuals that have additional health concerns that this is more of a concern on an individual basis. But en masse, we don't have reason to believe that there's significant concerns to using a mask while exercising in sport. And I will just note that most volleyball participation would not be considered heavy or maximal exercise. We are more of an anaerobic based sport. The last thing I'll just talk a little bit about though, is that not all masks are the same. So there is a really good document, a really good article that was produced by CBC Marketplace around the effectiveness of different types of masks. And from that, as well as from other research that's out there, we do know that we really should avoid the use of homemade masks. Homemade masks may actually increase potential risk of exercising in those masks because they may have a significant restriction in airflow that's allowed. So we would like to stay more to certified masks that are out there. And the two that are really recommended would be the kind of a white cotton mask that has what's called a Melplo non-woven polypropylene liner, as well as or the traditional blue surgical type masks are two good options that are available. The white mask that I mentioned though, that's most of what we consider like our sport masks would usually fall in that kind of category. All right, next one. Okay, so perhaps the single most important step we can take to ensure that participation behaviors are mitigating their chance of being exposed is really to try and limit the number of cohorts and bubbles that we are a part of. And so what we want to try and do is make sure that we keep our social connections outside of our sport to a minimum. And if we are in sport cohorts, we would like to be, we may only be allowed to be in one cohort. But if even if we're permitted to be in multiple cohorts, in an ideal world, if we can be in the smallest number as possible, that's going to really prevent the odds of us bringing the virus into, onto our cohort and then having transmission occur through the sport of volleyball. It's important that we continue to, actually, and then when we are in our sport, it's still the three main factors, distancing, mask use and hygiene protocols are still the things that are going to help us prevent transmission while we're playing our sport. It's important that we continue to enforce daily symptom screening. That there's a classification of individuals, what you're called posi symptomatic. And these are those individuals that have really minor symptoms. They actually present the, one of the greatest risks of spread. So what we know from research is it's those individuals that are most likely to be large transmitters of the virus is they just have really small miners, you know, sore throat and things like that. It's not that they're coughing all over the place. And it's that group that we want to try and capture through symptom checks. And so, you know, on the flip side though, temperature checks, which we've seen quite often, are really largely ineffective. Because most of these people that are in the posi symptomatic, they're not actually presenting yet with a fever. And the fever usually comes later in the symptoms, symptom process. And then the last one is similar to what we do with kind of concussion management is if in doubt, sit it out. So this is if an individual is presenting with really any symptoms. If we're really uncertain, is that enough? Is that a significant enough symptom? Let's just take, take time away and sit it out. And then the second one is if we're awaiting test results of a close contact. So if we, maybe we feel that, hey, I'm really close contact with that person and they are close contact with that person who we know is a confirmed case. And even though maybe through our contact tracing process, I'm not considered a close contact yet. Maybe I'll just hit this one out anyways, just in case to confirm that, that I'm safe. So just being conservative in our decision makings with participation. All right, next one. I just wanted to bring up a little bit because it's, I mean, and we have the unfortunate reality that we, a lot of us probably now know people that have had the virus and are trying to return from having COVID. So before starting what we consider like a graduated return to programming or to play, the athlete must be able to complete activity of daily living and be able to walk kind of 500 meters with, without excessive fatigue or breathlessness. And then they should have at least 10 days of rest from that point. So once they can kind of do normal daily activities, 10 days of rest and be seven days symptom free. And then experience suggests that some athletes right now are taking over three weeks to fully recover. So there is a graduate return from COVID document that's been put out by the British Journal of Sports Medicine and it's free online. So if you do have an individual that you know is trying to return to sport from having coronavirus, I highly recommend that you take a look at that document and consult with your medical professionals as well. All right, next one. The other, one of the bigger concerns with the return and why we want to be really gradual in our, in our process is that there's an increased risk of cardiac arrhythmias. And this is from what's called myocarditis, which is actually heart inflammation. So one studies found that that's as high as 79% in COVID patients. And in a smaller study looking at COVID within collegiate athletes, they found that it was about 15% of collegiate athletes that had myocarditis. So that's obviously of concern and we want to be able to try and screen for that and make sure that when the athlete is returning to sport that they're really healthy to do so. And the second part is, and we've seen this actually linked in recently with some of the vaccination pieces, but just with coronavirus in general, is that there is an increased risk of blood clots. And another reason that we want to be very gradual in our process and consult with medical professionals before fully returning to sport. All right, our golden ticket, this is what we've all been waiting for and it's now here. So we have four vaccines that are approved for use in Canada. Most of you have probably seen enough of this within the news, I won't, you know, go through this too much. But I'll just say that vaccine effectiveness is assessed on its ability to prevent infection. Okay, so it's not assessed on its abilities. When we see like the effectiveness of vaccines and we're seeing scales between 60%, sometimes as low as 50% up to 94% after one shot and two shot and trying to keep track of all that. Just being aware that that's its ability to prevent infection of the virus. All of the vaccines that are available to us right now in Canada are highly effective at preventing severe illness. And hospitalization and death is almost nonexistent, specifically mortality within any of these vaccines. So they're really, really effective. So we're definitely not in a situation where we need to be sitting around and waiting for, I want this one or that one. If you can get one of them right now, I would highly recommend that you do. No approved vaccines, however, at this point for those under the age of 16. And we do know that there are trials ongoing and we do expect some results coming out of those trials in the coming months. And hopefully that will result in those under the age of 16 being able to receive a vaccine. Right now, the estimated timeline in Canada, they've been talking about kind of early fall timelines that we're hearing at the moment. All right, next slide. All adult Canadians, so those over the age of 16, are expected to be able to receive their kind of first shot sometime in July. And right now, because of the variance of concern, we're anticipating that herd immunity will be reached somewhere in the neighborhood of 70, 90% of our population receiving the vaccine. So as we just mentioned, those under the 16, under the age of 16 may not have one. So it may take us a little bit while, a little while to truly get to herd immunity. And we should anticipate that there's going to be continual COVID protocols that we're going to have to follow for, for a while yet though. The one piece though, is that how vaccine rollout impacts hospitalization rates, we don't really know. And it's been hospitalization rates that have really driven a lot of policies and regions. And so as we continue, and I just have this graph here showing this is the age level and the percentage of the population that have been hospitalized within that age bracket. So we're basically, you know, we're vaccinating from the oldest to youngest individuals. As we continue to do that, we're anticipating that all of these start dropping off from having to be in the hospital. So that's going to be really interesting to see how our governments kind of modify policies moving forward when we maybe don't have the hospitalization numbers that we are still seeing today, unfortunately. All right, just really briefly is, to kind of wrap this up, is that risk mitigation measures are really unchanged. Kind of what we did through the fall as we finally start to get back into sport is the same things that we're going to continue to do in the same process for the variants of concern. Our greatest challenge is going to be competition because competition requires increased cohort size. It requires us to travel. And it's really unlikely that we're going to have any sort of testing that's going to help us get back to this. It's just not cost effective or we have real issues accessing the testing and it's not rapid enough. So we can expect a phased return to competition still to occur. And kind of this last image that you see, we actually put this out almost a year ago now of what we anticipated the return was going to be to sport. And we're still kind of in this, we're still going through this. You know, and in some ways, we're still on step one of this a year later. And now there areas of the country, we're progressing a little bit further along. But we still anticipate that this is going to be our return to competition pathway. All right. That is all for my talk. I'm happy to answer any questions you have in the chat. If there are any.
Thanks very much for that Kerry. We'll just give it a few minutes to see if anybody's typing away here and see how it goes.
So you're very thorough, so apparently.
Good job, no questions.
We always appreciate when you give us these updates because they're very informative.
Questions after the fact too, we can, oh, there we go. There's one.
Myocarditis sounds scary, diagnosed via x-ray or scan. So how would we be able to determine that?
Yeah, it's a good question. It's right now, they're not doing a lot of imaging for myocarditis. Sometimes it's assessed via EKGs. It'll really be on a case by case basis, whether or not they suspect that there may be myocarditis and if they want to screen for that. So again, I would just recommend if you are returning from COVID as an athlete, that you do check with your medical professional and they'll determine what are the necessary next steps from there.
And just an FYI, the document that Kerry showed with the returning gradual, that's actually being added into our return to play document. Dylan, our communications coordinator is busy updating that for us this week because there were changes again that Joanne will talk about. But that document will be available for all members, for all of you to find very easily.
And the, the slides will also be online after our presentation here. And can you recommend a brand of masks?
Yeah, you know, the one that I've found right now that in the feedback that I'm hearing from athletes that they like the most is actually the disposable blue masks, the ones that you see really commonly used all over the place. That seems to be the most popular version. There are sports specific brands that are out there. I know Adidas and Under Armour and Nike, they're all, they all make one now. So I haven't heard negative things about any of the sports brands, ones that are out there that are available. But I can say that from some of the training that we've had with national team athletes, the perception, the feedback has been the one they like the most is actually the disposable ones, despite how tough they are on the environment.
And they're available pretty much anywhere, right? Grocery stores, pharmacies?
I saw them in Costco yesterday, yeah.
Kerry, can you touch on, I think in Alberta, on one of the presentations you gave, we kind of talked about how to get the athletes used to wearing their masks. Because I know when we all first put them on for the first time and you were walking or you're just like, oh my God, it's hard to catch my breath. And now we're, you know, mandating in Ontario for them to wear the masks when they're exercising and practicing. Like, do you recommend like a phased in, try to get them gradually used to it or like any tips or tricks there?
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest thing is if we can start them wearing masks, doing kind of less intense activities and getting comfortable with the idea of wearing the mask. What we've seen is that, you know, with time, you can really build up to full intense activities. And I know that conversation that we've had, University of Alberta has been, was using masks from through the entire fall. And speaking with their coaching staff, what they were saying was that they had no issues basically returning to full pre-pandemic levels of training and intensity while wearing masks. But the first week was the hardest one and the athletes had the greatest kind of concerns and, and feedback in the first week was it wasn't great. And they felt that shortness of breath, but with time that seemed to dissipate. So I'd say, you know, kind of a gradual return of increased intensity and likely volume as well.
All right, we have one more follow up. Question as well about wearing masks outdoors with beach training. Any research or feedback there?
Not so much research that I can say on that. I know that the mask use, the big piece has really been in indoor and confined spaces is where there's been the greatest concern to using masks. Outdoors has been less of an issue or less of a concern, specifically if distancing is being utilized. But obviously, it's just another layer of protection. So depending on what's required in your area and your own self-assessment of risk, you may or may not be able to make that decision for yourself, whether or not you'd like to use a mask while you're in that training environment.
We have another question about rapid testing and how it's done in the States. And if kids can show up to a tournament, get a rapid test done and then, and then play. Just wondering if this is possible in Canada or why or why not we don't do this?
Yeah, it's really, yeah, I, yeah, I can see the question. It's a really good question. One of the reasons is that we actually don't have this approval of the same amount and the same types of rapid tests in Canada as what's approved for use in the States. So we have very, we have very little access to rapid tests. There's very, like, there's very few that are available and they're primarily being utilized in, in healthcare settings and not available in kind of public settings. I can tell you for us to try and get testing in a kind of a public setting right now, there are some quote unquote, rapid testing, which is like 90 minute turnaround of a PCR based test. And the costs of that are ranging anywhere between $90 to $150 a test. So it's just kind of cost prohibitive for us right now to do that. And the timing is also kind of difficult within Canada. Whereas I do know in the States, there's some different, different options that are built to them that I think are more cost effective. But as, as of right now, we don't have anything in Canada. That we're aware of.
Okay. Well. I think that might have been our last one. So. So I guess we'll thank Kerry again for coming in and presenting to us with all this beautiful information. We have any questions, feel free to end them, put them in the chat or Q and A. And we'll do our best to answer them and get the right information to you. But just want to say thanks to Kerry for signing in and giving us some of his time. And we'll be moving on to some Ontario stuff now.
Thanks everyone. Have a great, have a great town hall.
Yeah, feel free to stay on Kerry.
Yeah, stay on if you want. I don't mean to kick you out.
We're just kidding. Thank you for your time. We know it's in the time there. So yeah, thanks again. It's always great to get all your info and we always appreciate a lot of times when members send in questions, we send them over to Kerry. So thank you for that. She's always given us lots of great information. So.
Thanks everyone. Okay, take care.
All right, I will continue rolling Kerry.
Go for it.
Okay, thanks. And so same thing, just throw your questions in the chat. And if it's something that we're going to jump into at that time or at the end, so we'll go from there. We did want to start off our slide just on how difficult it is to maneuver through our, our government regulations, our rules, getting them applied to sport. It is pretty difficult. So this was a nice little picture that Dylan made our communications coordinator. Just to show like, there's a, there's an announcement that happens and a lot of times the actual regulations, well, actually all the time, they're not even released yet. So there's a couple day lag for us even to get the, the release of the official wording of the regulations. So a news announcement's made, there's some, there's some brief summaries of what it is. But we actually don't know all of the rules and even the regulations. So we are very lucky from Ontario volleyball, we do have a lawyer that then actually helps us interpret them. And we're really appreciative of that. And then we also have our sport consultants at the ministry. We ask them a lot of questions. And then we also check in with our insurance and we then try to figure out how it applies to volleyball. And we do, we do have to, we do have to sometimes really dive into a lot of the different regulations. So we, I will warn you right now, even with the announcements that came out on Friday, we actually have one of our legal consultations tomorrow. So it wasn't, it's unfortunate that I don't have all the answers tonight. But we do, we do have this on an ongoing basis. So we did want, we didn't want to postpone this and we had Kerry McDonald joining us. So we will get further answers on some of the regulations that we're still waiting for the final word on it that will get out to you tomorrow. And that's where it comes into, once we get our interpretations and our applications, we continue to communicate. We get things updated on the website and we, it turns into a long, a lot of work to keep things up to date as our team works to do that on a regular basis. So I just wanted to jump into the Ontario government and the framework as far as how, how it applies to, to our, to our sport. Just to, to look at how the province is situated right now. As you know, regions will move in and out of the colors. And all of us always hope to be in green, yellow or orange so we can play volleyball. But you will see that a big chunk of our province are in the red, which is the training zone and that are in lockdown where we're, yeah, not doing much. So the, this is the map of the current colors as of today. So some of the zones have moved in and out, so which is great. But just keep in mind that even on top of the government regulations and the zone, the color restrictions that's happening in your area, there may be further restrictions or requirements that are put on by the local public health in your area. And as always, the facility and the permit that you are able to obtain may have further rules as well. So you'll be required to follow any of, any of those rules and restrictions as well. So gray. Gray is the one that we are still getting some more information on what they are updating as far as the outdoor. As outdoors now, there is a gathering that is up to 10 people. There's also some of the things that are changing in gray is that some more amenities, especially outdoor. Everything is around outdoor, obviously, as on that risk mitigation scale that Kerry just presented, right? It's, it's, it is safer to be outside. It looks like there's going to be some more amenities that could open up. But again, that will also be very specific by some of the regions. So we are waiting to see what that means. Because if you can have 10 people outside, we now, you know, we're now in a situation where if, if a recreational amenity is allowed to be open, it's possible that there may be some skill work that could happen. But obviously, we will confirm that. So keep in mind for gray in, for outdoors, you can have 10 people. But indoors, you cannot gather with anyone indoors unless you live with them. So unless they're from your household. So this is the part that they're very clear in the government regulations. It is illegal to gather indoors with anyone you do not live with. So do not go anywhere and play volleyball with anyone other than your household, if you can find a gym. So just keep that in mind. That's the part that really puts gray on a really big stop, right? It's a really, there's no activity. You can't travel to other zones to, to practice or play indoors. If you are in gray, do not go indoors where there's anyone else. And that's just unfortunately, the rules at this time. And hopefully they will, you know, ease up a bit on them. Red control zone reminders, this is our zone that can train, but you must maintain your physical distancing all the time. So keep in mind those, those risk, the mitigation of risk that Kerry just said. It's about wearing your mask, keeping physical distance, right? So this is the important part in red control zone. We still need those. You must keep physical distance at all time. You can train. So the way our government words is, is that you can't have games or scrimmages. So you can do your skill work, you can train, but maintain physical distancing at all times. And it's only 10 participants inside, so facilities. It's obviously extremely tough. But as the weather changes, this is great. Outdoors, it is 25. So, you know, looking to grass or, you know, sand, if it's available, any beach courts. It is a great opportunity for the athletes to get a chance to do some of their training. We have a note, so at the bottom, I will get in with this, this note part. We did put it here because we wanted to really make sure that we didn't forget to share this point with you. So if you're. So if you're in the red, you can train in facilities in the green, orange or yellow. The government does not, it's not the same as gray. Where gray, you are not allowed to go inside in another indoors facility. In the other regions, it doesn't have that restriction. It's not recommended that you travel outside of your region. But if you are with your, your team and you can, the facility provides you with a permit and you can train, you, you can go and train. So please keep that in mind that in gray, it's, it is illegal. But in the other color zones, it's not recommended to travel outside of your regions, but it is it is allowed. But do not scrimmage. When in red, you're not scrimmaging. So red zones, we are, we are asking you not to scrimmage with other teams.
And Joe, just to kind of touch on the 10 person, you know, this is kind of wavered back and forth with the government regulations of just coaching and team staff count in the 10. Yes, it does. No, it doesn't. Yes, it does. It seems to change every couple of months.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thank you for that reminder because it is, it is, I'm going to tell you the answer from the ministry, but then you'll still have to follow your facility. So it is 10 participants. And as noted here, it's plus your, your coach and our supervisors. Because remember, you still want to look to your rule to make sure you have enough supervisors or parents there, but you can't have spectators. So it has to be a reasonable number that's supervising the group, depending on the age, obviously. So this part is the facility may stick very strictly just to the 10. And if they do, then the facility, they, they make the rules. But if you, if you are in charge of your permit and if you are in charge of a facility, the government regulations are the 10 plus a reasonable coach and or supervisors for that group and for that age.
We also have a few questions for the red zone. Carrie, want me to go ahead? Ask you in a mute. Okay. If you're in the red zone and you are outside, can you scrimmage six on six?
It says no scrimmage.
Yeah.
So you can do your skill work. You can make, you have to make sure that they're maintaining physical distancing at all time. So any of the drills and the training that you're doing, make sure that it's set up that the physical distancing can be maintained. So you do have to really look to the skill level also of your, of the players. Because that's where we have had clubs experience by law officers even questioning game like drills. And they just come in and say, we can find you, we can find every athlete, we can find everyone. And some of them aren't very nice. So just keep that in mind. But the, the one thing with outdoors, remember you can have less people and play two on two or four on four. They don't mean play, but do your, your training, your skill work and make it into some drills that are at least a little more entertaining for the, the athletes. I know it's tough to just do the same things that don't always have fun games.
We also have a couple more questions about red. And red in regards to beach programming with 25 participants, does that mean as a whole group? Or can you break up the group of eight on multiple courts with your own ball, with your own balls?
So let me see if I understand the question. So can you go on eight in a different group and then just work individually? Is that the question?
It says, does this mean a whole group? So 25 participants? Or can we break up groups of eight on multiple courts with our own balls? So groups of eight on one court with own balls.
Sure. Yes, you can. Now just keep in mind whoever's organizing that group. So the club, the coach, they can't gather more than the 25, right? So, and it is 25 participants. So you could still have your coaches and your supervisors outside of that.
Not included in the 25.
Yeah, I would, I would apply the same rule. Now Alicia's going to get a little excited. But this is where, wherever you get your permit, wherever, whatever facility you're at, ask the question.
Exactly.
Check. We've had many discussions about this, but yeah, this is where you want to make sure you check. And the, 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 these limits are going to be applied to who is organizing it. I'm, I'm, if I'm running that organized event, I can't gather more than the 25 people, right? The participants. So keep that in mind. But if you have multiple coaches and they are distanced enough, they're working on a court. You gotta, you have to just make sure that everything can stay safe and everyone can stay physically distanced. Then you can have your smaller groups and, and, you know, have fun, practice, play, stuff like that.
Okey dokey.
Is there any more red questions or shall I go on to our color zones?
I believe you've answered them all, so we can move on.
All right. Awesome. This is where we all want to be, green, yellow and orange. So this is when you can play volleyball. I'm going to say you could play volleyball, but remember it's modified. You at all times must avoid physical contact. You also want to keep in mind, you still want to be mitigating any of your risks. So you do want to make sure that when your athletes are warming up, when they're doing other activities where they don't need to breach physical distancing, they're doing that. So anytime you can modify to stay physical distanced, do that. While the, the, I'm going to say the game is actually being played. So if you are playing six on six, the athletes that are on the court can breach physical distancing. Every other, everyone else involved, the coach, the athletes on the bench, anyone on the side, they all must maintain physical distancing. You call a timeout, maintain physical distancing, like you have to be very, very careful. The rule is very clearly, it states while you play, you may breach physical distance, but you must avoid physical contact at all times. So, and if you cannot avoid physical contact, you cannot play. And that's, that's where, that's where it is. If you can't avoid physical contact, you can't play. So please, please, we've convinced them that volleyball can avoid physical contact. So please really pay attention to that and remind the athletes. Because this is where we don't want volleyball to be like, hey, no, you can't be played. So that's something that if we're really diligent, we want to, you know, keep people safe. I know, I know it's, I know it's, I mean, we all have the COVID fatigue and we want it to be over. But we are, I keep saying this to my staff too, we're almost there. We just need more people vaccinated. We just need more things to happen, but we just don't want volleyball to have any issues. As I could share a story with you that happened out in Newfoundland. There was a tournament that was held with no protocols. It wasn't done by the provincial organization. And now it was volleyballs, right, a COVID spreader. And that was what hit the news. That's what, what hit social media. And it just, it's just now all volleyball had to shut down in Newfoundland. So this is where it's like, stay, you know, very reasonable. Wherever you can keep your athletes safe and your coaches, make sure masks are worn, physical distancing. But you still have the opportunity in this green, yellow and orange to actually play the game. And during that time, breach your physical distance, distance requirement, but avoid physical contact. If you are going to run any leagues within your club or, you know, there's a small, a couple of teams around, do not exceed the 50. That is a very clear written rule. I don't know how or why the government picked this number. But that's what they have. It's like, it's just, it's been in their regulations since last, last summer. And they're very clear with this number. So if you have a league, you can only have 50 participants. So the public health are very well versed on that. That's the first question they'll ask you. And do not have like multiple divisions within that league and then play each other. So you can't mix the participants within the league. So just keep that in mind if you are running a league, that you do stick to those rules. And for, and in they, yellow and green, there, they do have some spectators that are allowed. But it would all be facility and permit dependent. Just keep that in mind. But in orange, they're very, they very clearly state no spectators. So our capacity limits are 50 people for indoor, indoor 100 for outdoor. If spectators are allowed, it is on top of that. Again, facility, like we said, facility dependent. I think I covered off. Is there anything I missed, Alicia? What else?
There was just a question again about members living in gray zones that play on a team or a club that maybe they're red zone or a green zone or whatever. And if that, you can even a coach, you know, any member that lives in a gray zone, are they allowed to travel and train with their team? And unfortunately, no. So I just put that answer in there, but wanted to reiterate that for everyone. It's, it's the law. Well, you know, we can't, there's no way around it. And then also, Joe, you did.
We are stuck.
We're stuck.
I just want to say one other thing about that gray and, and what we will confirm is the outdoor piece. Because it looks like that's where there's been the, the change. Like being able to go to a patio. So that's exciting is that if, you know, the athletes may be able to get outside, even if they live in gray and train with, with, with their group of friends. So that, that part is, we will confirm it for sure. But you can now gather 10 outside in gray, which I mean, Alicia, was that number four, five?
Yeah. And it, it's specific to indoor gatherings. So that's why like, and said, we're following up on that. And then also in terms of the leagues for the outdoor number, just once again, just to really clarify, if you have 100 people in a league that you're running, you had to break that down into a cohort of 50 and that 50 needs to stay together. You cannot intermingle between the two groups of 50.
Yeah. So, and this is where we talk about, okay, what's a way to reasonably then play that league? And then actually, well, well, there's been a couple of terms for it, washout period, take a break, take two weeks. And then just, it would be where you would want to change up teams and started, just call it a different league. Like just show, these are the things when we're dealing with public health, we just show very reasonably, it's like we have a group of 50. They play against each other for a number of weeks and then there's a two week break. And then we, then we move some of the teams around or some of the athletes onto different teams. So just make sure there's a, a plan in place and make sure that you show that how everywhere you're mitigating the risks of the transmission and following the rules of staying within the 50.
We also had another question pop up here. How are we regulating those teams, athletes, clubs who are already leaving gray zone to train with teams in red zone?
Well. Us personally, we don't regulate. That's the, that's that will be the bylaw officers. So in that, we have a slide of that a little later. But the, the thing, the reason that you really have to think in mind is keeps, keeping people safe. So it's the bylaw officers that would enforce this. They're the ones that enforce an issue, the fines. The clubs do have a COVID safety officer. So if there's something that is an issue within a club, please let them know. Because especially once you do not follow the rules and things are illegal. That's where, again, sorry, that's where you get into implications with not having insurance. People could, you know, are liable. There's a lot of issues that kind of then get created. And that's why we're being really clear on what is the part that's illegal. And it is very clearly stated, if you are in gray, you are not to gather indoors with anyone else other than your household.
And if the OVA staff receive concerns and complaints for a membership, we actually haven't received many. They are followed up with from the office staff as well, just to look into it, get more information and, you know, send out warning letters. And just like Joanne said, remember, this is serious. We can't break the laws, you know? If you are not following the laws, you are liable personally, you're, you know, and those fines are in place and they're pretty hefty. So. And safety, you know, we just need to make sure we're being safe and being responsible.
Yeah. And keep our sport going, right? So if we, because if we do follow the rules, we can keep it going. So it makes sense to, to, to go to our next slide on the compliance reminders around the return to play. You need to have your return to play protocol to have insurance. As soon as like, if, if an act is illegal, there's no insurance. Like that's, that's the part that is very clear. There is a support in Ontario's Recovery Act. And as long as you're diligently are working to be safe and not being negligent, you are protected from being sued. So that's not for profit, have that protection along with your coaches and volunteers. But you do have to be following the rules and diligently being safe. So that's where, that's why the next line says, member clubs are liable if there's no due diligence and they're not protecting everyone to the best of their ability. So you do, you do need to follow the rules in order to be protected by that act, be protected by insurance and not get sued. So you do need a permit also for insurance coverage. So keep that in mind if you are running outside. You can't just trespass on someone's property or a field and have insurance. So that's the, that's the other tricky part where it is, it's not easy sometimes to get those permits. So just, it's another thing to keep in mind, right? So you, as a coach, a director, you'll be liable if, if you don't go through the appropriate protocols and get the permits that you need. So just my next reminder, red and gray zones. Well, following all those rules and the government regulations, they're not permitted to play in the OVA competitions. So because the government regulations don't allow them to play in scrimmage, that's where individuals from red and gray zones won't be able to join into the OVA competitions. And as we noted, travel between zones, gray, it's not permitted. Red to green, it's not recommended. But there is a way to do it safely, right? Stay within your teams, training, stay within your training group. We understand a lot of people live on, on boundaries or, you know, their team will be made up of different, of athletes from red to green zones. So follow the rules of your facility and look at staying within your, your training group. But just keep in mind, if you are from gray, just me, I cannot go and play anywhere indoors. And yeah, sad. Okay. So that's.
Joe, maybe, sorry, just to bring it up to like another case in point that our staff have been running into with trying to get programs up and running as well. Like Joe mentioned, the public health units and facilities having rules above and beyond what's in the, in the government regulations. One thing we're really finding now too is communities and municipalities are saying, we're only going to allow people into our facility or give you a permit if you're at the same color level of, as us or better. So even though the government regulations say if you're in the orange zone, you can still play volleyball. Well, now we're running into facilities saying, nope, they're in orange and we're in yellow, they can't play. So once again, just that open communication with that facility is very, very important, just to make sure you are following their rules and regulations as well.
Yeah. And that's, and that is like, we keep saying it, it's an excellent point. Because one of the ways it's also going to come into play is when Suzanne has an event outdoors. She's going to have, she may have limits with getting that permit. And we will still run it and we'll run it with those rules, but then she may have an event happening that same weekend in another public health area and she doesn't have all those limitations. So this is something that it's going to be tough to manage. But if we can offer something to play to the athletes, we will. And our staff will, you know, muddle through it the best they can. But that's also on this next slide is what we're saying. I know we've said it over and over again, but we have to follow the facility rules. We have, they're the, they're the ones who, who are liable for anything that happens within their facility. So whatever rules they put out, we need to follow them. So the facility slash your permit, you have to follow those rules. The local public health may have more rules. So that's where again, like any of the tournaments that happen or the OVA events, there may be more rules at one location than another. Like that's just going to be the reality that we're going to be dealing with. If you come across any issues or questions from your local bylaw or your public health unit and you need any help from the OVA, just let us know. That's something that we have had those questions and we just helped share all of our documentation, share with them the rationale behind our return to play, behind our rules. And it usually can solve the problems for the public health. And even the bylaw officer, sometimes we've had to explain a little further and take it up into their, you know, their, the, the bylaws manager or some of the other one. And so we actually help to explain how our sport works, what would be allowed, what our overall return to play protocol is. And again, you hope it helps and that they're, they're, then they start to get a better understanding of our sport. But as you can imagine, the bylaw officers have no idea with all. But as you can imagine, the bylaw officers have no idea with all the different sports, what are the rules? And as I said, for volleyball, we're quite lucky, because based on our rules, we can say, like, we can avoid physical contact. So we can play, where like hockey, basketball, the others, they can't actually say that. So the bylaw officers see a game happening with volleyball, and they don't understand that we are allowed to play. But they do need to go and stop the soccer field that's happening beside, right? So this is, this is something that if you do, you know, run into any of it, we're happy to help. And as we said, reporting any infractions, like, let's keep people safe. It is the local bylaw. There's a, there's a club contact, their, their COVID safety officer, and you can always contact the OVA office. Just a couple of pieces to keep in mind. These protocols are changing quickly, especially the health screening. As Alicia will tell you. And as any of you know, like with kids in school, the health screening gets updated quite often. As they find out more, more, just, just more protocol, more rules. So keep in mind that that, that will change. We do post things on our website. And the government regulations will continue to be updated. So not only about regions moving in and out of their colors. But we are seeing some changes right now. As we said, we're going to get more information about gray. As they're, as they're finding that with the weather obviously changing, outdoor being safer. We do think there's going to be some easing up from outdoor activities. So that would be absolutely, obviously fantastic for all of us. But also then the next phase that we don't know of how government regulations will change as more of the population gets vaccinated. So that's another thing to keep, you know, that we're obviously keeping tabs on, and to keep in mind that we don't know what those implications will be yet. We are obviously very optimistic about it, but we don't know what those are yet. So that's kind of the thing. And just remember, masks are mandatory all times to play volleyball.
And that's indoor and outdoor currently, is that correct?
That's-
We just had that question pop up.
Yep.
Okay, and we also had another one pop up. Can red zone compete beach twos in smaller competitions?
No, the government regulation clearly states no games and scrimmages, so unfortunately, we cannot. And that's just the very unfortunate.
And I don't know if we want to, I believe you might have touched on this before, Joanne, it was about, I believe, scrimmaging with other teams. It's the question says, so does that mean you can only scrimmage with two other teams? And those teams remain the same for a period of time before you can change? You can't play a different team each week, or you can. So that, I think, is touching on the washout period and you know, having your fifty and then wash out, and then fifty again with different athletes, different teams?
Yeah, so there isn't government regulations around playing someone different time after, like, day after day after day, week after week after week. But what, what we are asking is for your team, your coach, you know, your club to be very reasonable with that. Really look to the modified format that Kerry, that your team put out. About how you do have a group that, of teams that you agree to play, you play that, those group of teams. Then you wait before you switch the group. That's, that's just, it's just, it's just a risk mitigation, right? So if you can contain your group into a smaller number, then it's just less risk. So do we want, we don't want you to play someone different week after week after week and keep changing that up. But if, if you're playing a team, you know, maybe play them for a couple of weeks, and then take, you know. Don't play. Take a week, take a week off, take the two weeks, right, and change up. So try to keep that in mind. I mean, the safest is to keep your group as small as you can. And that's, that's really the best, you know, and if you have athletes that enjoy outdoor, play grass, play outside.
And just on outside, we had a question about masks outside. Playing with a mask in the middle of summer would cause more harm. Do we, how do we feel about that?
This, we have as you saw, we had a resource of Kerry McDonald, we will be looking to him again as we get into the warmer months. And we'll see also what is happening, obviously, with COVID at that time. But at this time, yes, masks will be worn outside. So, but yeah, we, we definitely have that on our radar as really consider what's going to happen as it gets warmer.
I think, Joe, too, sorry to go back away from the mask for a second, and going back to like the league structure and the cohorts of fifty and during the washout periods and stuff as well. The government regulations don't actually define what a league is. And when we're talking to different bylaw officers, they automatically are like, you're in a league, you're playing multiple teams, that's your league, you can't go outside of that cohort. So once again, when we have talked to different bylaw officers, we try to explain things, but sometimes they just can't keep a hat, like, get past that. So that's kind of why we're suggesting, and that's why we created the model that we did for like the modified wave structures for the teams to play. And they, you know, have, they have their group of three or four, and they play for the month, have a little bit of a two-week washout, and then have the next group of teams. So that's really what we recommend to kind of stay within the regulations.
Yeah, and it, and when you explain your rationale to them. It's, you know, they're reasonable, it, they go, okay, that makes sense. Because it's impossible for the regulations to cover off every different scenario for every sport and for, you know, anything, but if you do look to the principle of it, and then you explain how you applied it, and how you're mitigating the risks. That's, that, that does seem to work. Is there any more return to play? The compliance type questions, because then we're just getting into, actually, it's a little bit different, because it's just a funny announcement on the that our ministry currently made that affects our our sector, our sports sector. I think there is another question. I'm just trying to read it. Okay. Well, that is, so I think the question is, we're not in contact, so we would be treated like golf and baseball, and that's yeah, so these are all the same rules that golf and baseball have to also adhere to. I mean, golf is individual, so they fall under the individual's sports, but baseball, actually, I don't think has been able to play much. Haven't really, because they couldn't get their fields last year. So I don't, I don't know a lot about about what they've been able to actually get, get into action. But yeah, everyone, every sport has to follow the avoid physical contact and what we went through in the different colored zones. Okay, well, if there's any more that pop up, we can jump on them, but I just wanted to, because we're almost, we're actually over our time. I just wanted to just highlight a couple of funding announcements, because it does affect our athletes, and it does affect our clubs. So the first one being our Quest for Gold funding, so they did make an announcement, they actually made a, they made four announcements about, for our, for our sports sector, announcing a fifteen, fifteen point three million investment into our sports sector. Although this is not new money, but I will explain a little further about what some of it is. So usually, we have an Ontario card, and it's called this Quest for Gold funding. And there's, there's also a component of the Quest for Gold funding that goes to our national team-carded athletes. They unfortunately, I'm saying unfortunately, because it is really sad. They are not giving out the Ontario card funding this year. The positive part is, is they are giving it out, they're giving it to the Canadian-carded athletes. And they're giving them a top-up, and they're recognizing that they have been hit hard by COVID, a lot of them are trying to prepare for the Olympics. So it is great that the sport, the money is staying to the, to the athletes. But it's not providing any funding at all to the Ontario carded athletes, who are those athletes that are trying to make the national teams. So that's all I have to say about that. We're extremely disappointed. So normally, the, the OVA would manage a process where we have a selection criteria that's approved by the ministry, we we then provide through, we administer the program to, from the ministry to our athletes and provide their funding. So that is sad, but we will continue there. So there is no Ontario Quest for Gold cards this year. So we just wanted to be very clear with that. Please write to the minister and let her know how upset you are about it. So the other announcement they made. They, they provided the Ontario Hockey League scholarship money. And I'm going to go to the next one. Sport for Ontario, a new organization was provided three million dollars of funding, and it's to deliver a pilot program to help kids and families regain confidence in sport and recreation activities. So this is part of in their, the government's response to, they think people are going to be nervous to return to sport. They're going to be like, oh my gosh, is it going to be too risky with COVID? So this is part of what this organization is going to help to combat. So I don't know anything else, other than what is put in that news announcement. So we were floored by this. Because we thought that they would have used the provincial sport organizations to promote your sport, to regain the confidence for the families. So we don't know what Sport for Ontario is launching here. So that's a stay tuned. And the other money that they announced, it is to the provincial sport organizations, which the OVA is one of the sixty-three. In total, there's three point six million dollars, and it, it's to support member community sports clubs who provide access to sports. Again, we don't have any details yet. So stay tuned. When we have some, we will happily share. And the OVA will administer how we support our local community and to build, you know, provide access to volleyball. So when we know more, we just want to throw that out there to stay tuned and are there is a return to sport happening. It's obviously, you know, COVID is still wreaking a lot of havoc everywhere. Especially in volleyball, because we really need the school boards to give us access back to gyms. But they are trying to create some investments and some opportunities for people, especially the grassroots and the community level to play again. So once I have details on that. We will figure more out about how we will execute that program.
Okay.
Upcoming town halls, March twenty-nine? You want to do the questions, or you want me to?
I don't, it's up to you. I have it on my agenda that we do questions next. So let's just go through this, and then we can go with questions. Sorry.
That's okay. Week, we have the Athlete Insight Program with our athlete development team. And then again, they'll do an update on athlete development, which will cover off team material programming. And then we'll have Suzanne with her outdoor programs update, and we'll know more what's happening with our outdoor programs. And so those are, those are big town halls. Those are exciting, a lot more exciting than this one.
Oh, this is fun.
So yeah, if there's any more questions, we're happy to answer them, but also thank you for hanging in there. We even went over an hour.
Okay, we do have one more question that came in, and it's about field size and twenty-five. Is there any limitations on the, the field size, if you can separate it, things along that? If you're outdoors, that is.
The important part is, is it has to be a large enough space to be able to maintain your physical distancing. So they don't actually put in like, okay, it has to be like, you know.
Two cores.
Yeah, no. You have to be able to maintain your physical distancing. And that's really, really about it.
I think another part of that question as well is, can you have multiple fields that you're organizing with twenty-five people per field?
Again, keep in mind who's organizing. You can't, you have to, you, you can only organize twenty-five at a time. So you have to be able to make sure that if you're having another group come in of twenty-five, that there's a way to separate that group. That group is separate, they have a different entry-exit, it's organized differently, there's a coach in charge, like you have to make sure that there's a way to separate that, that piece. And we had all those, I think, those ideas in some of our return to play documents. Is there any other questions? You're good, Kerry?
Yeah, so far, we're, oh, we just had another one pop up.
Nope, you got to thank you.
Oh, okay, perfect. There we go. Like I said, if you guys have any questions, feel free to email us after. We'll, we'll get you your answers. All the questions that we ask here will also be posted on our website and in the town hall session with the slides and the FAQ and and all that after. So that's a great resource for you to, to check back if you have any questions.
See, and the recording as well goes on the OVA.
Yep.
So.
Sorry, I forgot one other thing. Alicia, you forgot to remind me. What other thing we will be communicating? Bear with me while I pull it up, is your summary chart.
Right, sorry.
No, I, yeah, no, I forgot about it. I just, I think I have to stop sharing. Sorry. I'm struggling with my computer.
Okay, well, Joanne's pulling it up. I can give a really brief overview of what this summary document is. You know, we all know how intimidating and overwhelming the return to play documents can be when it's, you know, sixty to seventy pages of documentation that you need to read through. So we wanted to have a really quick and dirty one-page summary of every from the, everything from the white stay-at-home orders all the way to the green. We're happy in playing orders. So it just really breaks it down on one page in a chart format. But hopefully Joe can pull up. There we go.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, perfect, Alicia. And this is, this is like what, what you were saying, we'll just make, we'll confirm our outdoor organized under lockdown gray, and it'll give that quick reference. Yeah, is there anything else you want to cover off on, Alicia, now that I have it here?
No, we are good. Yeah, once everything gets updated again, Dylan will send out the communications later this week with all the updated documents and all that fun stuff.
So hopefully that will cover off an easy way to maneuver through these, the government's framework with volleyball.
Okay. So there you have it, everybody. Thanks so much for spending your evening with us. We appreciate it. And I hope everybody stays safe and has a, a great week.
So stay safe and hang in there. We're getting closer.
We can do it.